The Craven County Board of Commissioners' regular session meeting for Monday, March the 1st, 2021 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. If you will, please let us stand as we salute and pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, ruler of all things and all men, you have set all things to move in harmony. You desire that men dwell in unity and love. Cause people everywhere to respect law and justice. Where people are unjust, inhumane, and cruel, send correction. When they are at war, send peace. Give to those whom you have placed in the seats of honor and power the blessing of sound judgment, the skill of making wise decisions, the patience to act in due time, and the tact for being mutually helpful. May wisdom and knowledge be the stability of our time, and our deepest trust be in you, the Lord of nations and the King of kings. Amen.
Amen.
Commissioners, before you, you have your agenda. Are there any items that need to be added to tonight's agenda or removed? Hearing none, do I have a motion that we accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next is the petitions of citizens for agenda topics. Mr. Vice Chair, do we have anyone?
We have none tonight.
All right, nobody signing up tonight. Next would be the consent agenda. You have the minutes of the February 15th, 2021, regular session, and also the tax releases and refunds. Are there any items to pull from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Next is departmental matters. We first tonight, we have Ms. Tarsha McCoy, our Director for Convention Center, who will come and present Minji's partnership agreement. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman.
Glad to have you this evening.
Thank you for having me. Welcome, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you.
Craven County and the New Bern Riverfront Convention Center first announced in September of 1999 an exclusive agreement with Pepsi that only Pepsi products would be used at the new center. This agreement was for a five-year term. As the Convention Center was being reopened after repairs for Hurricane Florence, it was decided that the center would offer both Pepsi and Coke products to our attendees per their request. We were recently approached by Minji's Bottling Group to be considered becoming an exclusive Pepsi facility once again. This agreement, shown in Attachment 3, would be a five-year agreement beginning March 2021. Minji's group would, in exchange for this agreement, supply the Convention Center with a thousand annual sponsorship towards Convention Center self-promoted events, $500 annual in-kind product, and an annual marketing tag valued at $19,000 annually. Per staff review of the agreement, with management and attorney approval, our recommendation would be to approve the five-year agreement, making the New Bern Riverfront Convention Center once again an exclusive Pepsi product facility.
All right, Commissioners, are there any questions for Ms. McCoy? Hearing no questions. Do we have a motion to approve the contract with Minji's Bottling Company?
So moved.
You have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. We appreciate it. Next is solid waste. Mr. Stephen Astor, our solid waste director. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to come here today and present on solid waste matters. I have two items for you today. The first item is a budget amendment and approval of purchase for 240 Bailey Lane in Vanceboro. The Board previously approved an assignment of contract for this property located at 240 Bailey Lane in Vanceboro. Subsequently, its staff has obtained a survey and environmental assessment and a title exam, all for this property, and those due diligence items show that the property is acceptable for the county's intended use. In turn, the county is in a position to close on the purchase of the property in the coming weeks. Staff and legal counsel recommend that the Board authorize the county to move forward with closing on the property. In order to do this, a budget amendment in the amount of $40,000 needs to be approved, and you can see that in Attachment 4A. The amount reflects the purchase price of $39,000 plus a $1,000 for settlement costs. Solid Waste Department is requesting a roll call vote for the approval of the budget amendment in the amount of $40,000 and the approved closing of the purchase of the real property located at 240 Bailey Lane in Vanceboro, and authorize the Chairman, the Vice Chair, the Clerk, the Manager, the Assistant County Manager, and the County Attorney to take such actions as they may see reasonably necessary for the same.
All right, Board, do you have any questions for Mr. Astor? Hearing none, do I have a motion that we approve the budget amendment in the amount of $40,000?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion upon the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. All right, Item B.
Thank you, Chairman. Item B is the approval of purchase contract for the property located at 241 Belltown Road in Dover. At the November 16th, 2020 work session, the Board of Commissioners authorized staff to explore the purchase of 241 Belltown Road in Dover. The parcel number for that property is 3-030-116. This parcel is approximately nine acres and adjoins the Craven County Fort Barnwell Solid Waste Convention Center. The owner is willing to sell the property and has accepted an offer of $15,000. The next step is for Craven County to approve the purchase contract with Ronnie Gray. The county attorney is also recommending that the property boundary survey and the Phase 1 environmental assessment be performed as part of the county's due diligence review. Craven County Solid Waste is requesting a resolution for exemption for that project. This exemption will allow the Solid Waste Department to contract with Avos Engineering to perform these engineering and surveying services and forego the request for qualifications process. The Craven County Board of Commissioners are asked to consider the approval of the purchase contract of $15,000, the exemption of engineering and surveying services, and the budget amendment in the amount of $13,700. Those can be found in Attachment 4B. Solid Waste Department is asking for the Board's approval and a roll call vote of the purchase contract, exemption for these engineering services, and the budget amendment in the amount of $13,700.
Okay, Board, do you have any questions?
Just a clarification.
Yes, sir.
So all we need is 13, 7 to clear this and take it, or we need 15 plus 13?
Yes, sir. It's $15,000 for the purchase of the property and $13,700 for the engineering services.
Totally, my girl.
Mr. County Manager, you want to add anything?
Yes, sir. It's a big site. It's bigger than what we've been buying. It's nine acres. What we're trying to make sure is there's no potential problems by acquiring this property that we would find by spending this money upfront. It's certainly a lot of money to spend on this type of thing, but I'll certainly defer to the county attorney. We feel it necessary to do it before we jump in with both feet.
Absolutely. I'll add that the boundary survey, I think this parcel has some water swamp type of things on it, so my guess is it's a little more difficult to survey than easy dry land might be, and I will absolutely say that if we choose to forego any of the diligence cost and something is wrong with the property, we'll spend way more than that in the long run getting it sorted out. So I absolutely agree with Mr. Astor that we should go this route with these due diligence items.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is for the budget amendment in the amount of $13,700. Hearing no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Astor.
Thank you, Board.
Appreciate it, sir. All right, next we have with us Ms. Melanie Ray, our Director of Elections. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. It's good to be with you tonight.
Good to have you.
And the Elections would like to request the Board of Commissioners' approval of a 2020 HAVA Fund sub-grant for the purpose of improving the administration of federal elections, and the funds would be used for enhancing our election technology, updating our software of our current voting systems, and also improving in acquiring and replacing our ADA voting equipment with the new equipment due to the old ADA's becoming obsolete. So we're very fortunate to get this money now and be able to spend it on the expensive stuff on replacing ADA equipment. So we are asking for the approval of HAVA funds of $93,050.
Okay, questions from the Board? Commissioner Liner?
HAVA grant, what's HAVA?
Help Americans Vote Assistance Act. It's federal money.
Have we ever received this grant before?
Oh, yes. They used to give it quite frequently, but that stopped about right after 2008. Your old Ivotronics and the old M100s were bought mostly with HAVA funds. We did, as a county, have to purchase our DS200s that we bought in 2014 because there were no HAVA funds anymore. So this is a very, very unlikely situation of them finding more money. I think COVID, some of that had to do with it, and it's very unlikely, they say, we could get another portion of HAVA funds in the future.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Ms. Ray. All right, hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? And the motion is to approve this budget amendment of $93,005. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
And let me say, you have received, hopefully, email invited to our demonstrations. We have to by law go see a demonstration of two vendors. One of them we cannot purchase because it's not compatible with our current equipment, but we do have to show it. That's tomorrow at 11:00, and then the one that we're considering is Wednesday at 2:00. So you're welcome to view that live.
Could I also ask you why you're here, and you may not know this question, and I respect that? But we did read in the paper the other day about the desire from the North Carolina Board of Elections to maybe postpone municipal elections.
Yes.
Have you heard anything more on that in recent?
Well, due to census, any municipality that votes by districts or wards, which would be City of New Bern, they're supposed to have their redistricting complete by the end of July. Well, that's not going to happen to be able to have their 2019 elections. So we already knew that was a good possibility. The City of New Bern may have to postpone theirs to 2022. What our executive director is proposing, that all municipalities be delayed until 2022, and that's been suggested to the legislature.
Is there any timeframe now that you might see that the legislature?
What she is suggesting is that the municipal elections happen in March, and then the primaries happen in May. That is the suggestion. Of course, the legislative can do, you know, at their will, but the ones they have to look at would be the hardest is City of New Bern because they're the only one in our county, along with 15 other municipalities that run election runoff. So you would have to figure out if they run in March, when would their runoff be? But all the other ones are plurality, so just having a March election would finish theirs. But it could, up in the air, they could decide to do all the elections in March or all the elections in May. It's really up to the legislatures now. They've got to do something, and hopefully, they'll do it quickly so we have time to properly prepare, but...
Any additional questions for Ms. Ray?
Well, one, to me, it seems that if we had all the elections, or the most elections that happened at one time, is going to increase voter turnout and increase interest in these elections. Is there any particular reason why the director is proposing March as opposed to part of the normal cycle?
I think she's really giving some options to the legislature. Sometimes, if you have your municipalities depending on how many you have in a county, it could make your ballot longer. As always, we do, when I give estimates to the municipalities, I always give them an estimate if they went to even elections. It's way, way less cost.
That's what I was getting ready to say.
It's way less cost. Trent Woods has a bill right now in the legislative to move to 2022 even elections, not have the 19, and move to 2022. It will save them from about a $4,000 bill to about a $500 bill. So it is something that I always try to make our municipalities aware of. I did try to get City of New Bern to move from election runoff to plurality. Didn't pull the trigger, but they've also talked about going to even. They're going to bring it up, I think, again, now that they're going to be delayed to 2022. So it's a good opportunity, but legislative, has to be a legislative bill. They vote and then a legislative bill. But it is cost savings, but the municipalities do have those options. But this year, they may not be given the option to delay to 2020. They will have to delay probably due to the legislature.
Okay. Any other questions? No, we thank you so much. Appreciate what you do.
Thanks.
All right, next we have with us Mr. Roger Wetheren from the Number Nine Township Fire and Rescue, and Mr. Stanley Kite. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, first I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and present to you Mr. Roger Wetheren, who is President of the Number Nine Township Fire Department. As you can see in your package, they were the recipients this year of the North Carolina Department of Insurance Fire and Rescue Division grant, and Mr. Wetheren has a request for a budget amendment. So at this time, I'd like to let him make that presentation to you, and I'll stand by if you have any further questions of me.
Thank you, Ms. Kite. Good evening, Mr. Wetheren.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank y'all. When we put in for the grant, we had no intention that it happened to come and ask for any reserve. But as y'all know, just a little thing called COVID. And if you hadn't had it, thank the Lord that you hadn't had it, because I did, and it's no fun. So, but our bingo that we normally have in March, this would have been our 28th year straight that we've had it, we had canceled. You can't get that many people to play bingo in one room, you know, to make any money. So that put us in a little bit of a deficit as far as being able to pay for our half of the grant. I have been able to, the last five years, to keep our budget at Number Nine at the same level. I've not asked for an increase, but by doing that, we have been able to put a little reserve over in the county funds for instances like if we had a truck go bad or this situation like this. And so with this money, what are due, let us pay for the grant, of which we're replacing a 20-year-old generator. We're going from a 30 KW generator to an 80 KW, which better serve the community. Plus, at our substation, we're putting in a 20 KW so that it will serve that end of the thing better. So I would really appreciate if we can take some money. I think we're asking for $24,900. That will be our half of what the grant would be.
All right, any questions for Mr. Wetheren? Commissioner Liner?
Manager, what have they got left in their account if they take this much out?
He's contemplating you taking it for fund balance. The request is to take it for fund balance. Is that correct, Mr. Warren?
Says here.
You will have approximately $80,000 left in his fund on the county books.
Okay. Yeah, but out of his funds, not...
Yes, sir. I apologize.
Wait, I have lost the bubble here. Are we taking 24-9 out of fund balance, or?
It's fund.
Township 9 is fund out?
The fire district's fund balance is being held in the county's books.
Okay, got it.
My apologies, Commissioner Liner.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, I'll take that as a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Let me just say that I live in Number Nine Township, and Roger and all these guys do a great job. The bingo is a great asset, just as Co-City has their firemen today and Fort Barnwell has their night there. All of them are in a financial crunch because of that this year, and so I appreciate the Board and their support for this. It will be of benefit to our community. All right, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Just one more thing I'd like to tell you. This is 52 years that I've been a volunteer at Number Nine Township, ever since the start.
Thank you for your service.
Long time.
You about beat Theron, haven't you?
Just about.
All right, next we have Mr. Craig Warren, our Finance Director for the Annual Audit Contract for Fiscal Year 2021.
Good evening, Board. I have one item on the agenda for you tonight, and that is the Annual Audit Contract for Fiscal Year 2021. Thompson Price...
Hold on one second, if you will. Right, I've got a message from Mr. Brunson saying the YouTube stream is not working. Okay. All right, if you will, let staff know that. I'm sorry. No problem, no problem. Very important.
Okay. We have an audit contract here from Thompson Price, Scott Adams &amp; Company. They've submitted their proposal for the county's annual audit for the current fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. The proposed fee is $72,600, the same fee charged for the fiscal year 2020. It represents year two of a three-year cost proposal that was approved by the Board last May. I am also pleased to announce at this point, for the year one, that the county was able to realize $56,833 with the savings from the previous fiscal year, which would be FY19. Not only that, the audit firm did a really good job and was able, much working well ahead of us, and to assist us in getting that submitted to the state on time. So they did a very good job. Staff recommends that we continue to contract with Thompson Price, Scott, Adams &amp; Company, PA, for another year and to perform the annual audit for the current fiscal year 2021.
Okay, questions? Mr. Commissioner Liner?
How do we realize that much savings?
Well, like I said, I think the audit hours that were put into the previous audits each year kind of grow and grow. There's cost CPI increases that they apply to it on their side, and I think every so often, you have to kind of bid this out in order to bring it back down to more of a realistic cost.
What were we paying under our last contractor?
Well, we saved $56,833, so it was...
You're saying we had a $128,000 contract for our last audit?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, other questions? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, if you will, call the roll for us, please.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Craig. All right, next we have on the agenda appointments. You have there before you the list of pending appointments. Also, under current, for tonight's consideration is the First Highway 70 Quarter Committee. Currently, Mr. Danny Walsh sits on...
Make a motion to reappoint.
All right, do we have any other nominations from the Board? Hearing none, he will be accepted by acclamation. Next, you have the Clean Sweep Committee. Mrs. Debbie Kirkman Hodges, she seeks reappointment. I would ask that the Board, if you would, to reappoint her. Do we have any other nominations?
Hearing none, she will be also accepted by acclamation. All right, you have before you a list of the upcoming terms for fire tax commissioners and also the Fireman's Relief Board of Trustees, so please take note of that. Any other appointments to consider tonight, Board? All right, hearing none. Next will be the County Attorney's Report. Mr. Grady?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have one item for you this evening. This is the final approval on the sale of county-owned real estate that the county acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The tract's out on Sand Hill Road near Dover with a parcel ID number of 3-058-071. The property has been out for upset bids, and we received no upset bids. The original bid amount was $1,750. The taxes foreclosed upon and the cost of the foreclosure together were $2,410.39, and the tax value on the property is $2,700. It's my recommendation that the Board approve the final sale so we can sign the deed and get it back on the tax rolls.
Yes.
The person that's purchasing the property, do they have to pay the taxes?
No, ma'am. Going forward, certainly, they do.
I know that, but they don't have to pay the taxes to purchase. It's just a clarification.
Well, I've got a puzzled look on my face because the purchase price is in part based on the taxes that the county did not receive originally. So in a very indirect way, my answer would be yes, but it's not a legal requirement that they, dollar for dollar, pay the taxes that the county did not receive over the years, if that makes any sense.
Okay, other questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion that we adopt the resolution approving the conveyance?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, thank you, Ms. Ray.
Thank you, nothing further.
All right, appreciate it, sir. All right, next on the agenda would be the petitions of citizens for general topics. Mr. Vice Chairman, do we have anyone?
We do not.
All right. Next would be the County Manager Report. Mr. Vike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity. I just have three quick things for you tonight. Two of them involve your calendar. We'll do those first. Reminder that after your next meeting on March 15th, there is a scheduled work session, tentatively scheduled from 10:30 to 2:30, as we discussed a couple meetings ago. Just to give you an idea, we're still putting the agenda together, but we're going to have representatives from DOT here talk about secondary roads, upcoming projects, and bridge replacements. We're going to have Mr. Antry and Mr. Jones from the Tax Office talking about revaluation. Mark Finlayson and Rhonda Murray with ACT will be here to give you a presentation on the Military Influence Overlay District. And we also, based on comments of the last meeting, will have a discussion on convenience site accommodations for larger trailers. So there's other things I probably didn't scratch down, but that's the meat of it right there. Also, Commissioner asked me earlier about budget work sessions. I wanted to go ahead and get those on your calendars. I know it's awfully early to be talking about it, but now's the time to get it on there. Give me one second here. It would be, the first meeting would begin on May 17. You have a normal day meeting on May 17. We finish that meeting, take a small break, come back, do our fire department budgets that day. May 18, 19, and 20 would be our traditional budget work sessions, going through the general fund, try to get through the book in that amount of time. And then, of course, we would then schedule meetings as necessary based on that review and the amount of staff time it takes to go answer questions or whatever needs to be done. But I want to get those first four dates on your calendars today so we could get those scheduled.
Okay, Mr. Chair, so that you know, the afternoon of May 18th, I have an NC MAC meeting. So I'll be here for everything else but that, but I have to be there for that.
Okay, all right.
County Manager, is it three days or four days?
It's the 17th, 18th, 19th, and 20th. But remember, you're already here on the 17th for your Commissioner meeting.
All right, any other questions from the Board?
And, Mr. Chairman, outside the two calendars, I just wanted to bring the Board's attention to House Bill 119. Many of you have probably received some email correspondence from the Association of County Commissioners. This is... This is a bill that was brought forth in the House to deal with COVID relief for small businesses, but it's revolving in the tax world, and there's a good bit of concern from counties and cities about what the impacts would be. We're still doing research internally on a staff level, aren't prepared to give you a recommendation, one way or the other, but the Association has already came out with a bullet point, it's a nice sheet they sent out on Friday, I'd recommend you look at that. And it could be a significant revenue decrease for counties depending on how that bill ends up, so just want to put it on your radar. House Bill one nineteen.
And it's hot, and it's running.
County Manager, on the eighteen, nineteenth, twenty, at what time do you see those?
We just start at eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty, okay.
Usually try to run all day if we can.
Now, Jack, are we gonna do budget here, or are we gonna go to the-
I was gonna suggest the Convention Center, I think it's a little more comfortable there, but it's the Board's call. We did it here last year, I didn't enjoy it that much with the little tables. Down there, I think we can get spaced out.
Are the Board in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We'll just have to notice that, but we'll do that when we get closer.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say it would be a significant decrease in revenue?
Potentially, potentially. So what it does is it would do two things. One, it would give, and this is where there's some gray area, leeway to businesses to pay their taxes, meaning giving them a period of time, which isn't the end of the world, it's just a slow pay versus a no pay. The other calls for a one-time revaluation of those businesses based on revenue loss. I can't tell you what that would be, it would just be how widespread and how big the difference was. And I think you're gonna have businesses that are disproportionately affected. Some have really risen during the pandemic, and some have gone to nothing. So it's hard to tell you, and I think that's where staff needs more time to see what exactly the wording is. But we're going into a revale anyway, so there's some, it's just not immediate relief, I guess, is my statement. So yes, there's potential for significant revenue.
But it is hard to balance the budget with-
With that hanging over our head, it'd be almost impossible. And your fire departments and folks who rely on that, they're gonna have the same challenge you would, along with your municipalities. Don't forget, I mean, they have the same system that we use.
Did anyone bring to their attention the need for funds to keep the counties operating?
The statement I hang my hat on was one, and I can't take credit for it, was made by one of the staff at the Association, is that seventy percent or more of what counties do is state mandated. I mean, you have very little discretionary funding in your budget. If you look at just DSS, health, law enforcement, and education, you're at eighty percent of your budget right there. And all that's mandated services in the count, by the state.
But keep in mind also, the way it's written right now today, they have to pay it at the end of the year, come December, whenever they do it. But they can ask for an extension as long as they pay the fine. So you're looking at two budget cycles that you don't know how much money you've got coming in.
So on taxes, you have a finite time typically where most of your money comes in, right around the first of the year, right? So we live off fund balance for July, August, September, October, it starts coming in, then it gets really hot, and then we make it through the rest of the year, and you do this over and over and over again. So if you have a portion of your population that has twelve-month increments, you're gonna get slow paid, right?
Right.
You're gonna have to drag it out, so that fund balance is gonna have to cover more. So sometimes, and this is a perfect example of why counties need fund balances that aren't just eight percent. In situations like this, you'd have to have a much larger fund balance to make it work.
Great point, any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Commissioners' reports this evening. Commissioner Lainer?
Sir, I do. If this Board would indulge me, I've had some calls in the last couple of weeks on animals. And I've gone through our animal ordinance, and I'd like, if this Board would be all right, have staff take a look at that ordinance. There's nothing in there saying where those dogs and cats or animals are taken to once they're picked up by us. They're not necessarily taken to our shelter. And we spent over a million and a half dollars to improve that shelter, and some of these animals are going to other shelters. So I'd like to see if we can maybe put something in there that any animal picked up by our Animal Control Officer goes to the county animal shelter. Because they have no way of knowing, the owner that's picked up from sees that tag, county animal shelter. They call the animal shelter, and they say, we don't have that animal. So I think we need to, if it's all right with this Board, to have the staff take a look at that.
Okay, Mr. County Manager?
Yes, sir, we got it.
Question, Commissioner, what other shelters might they be going to, do we know?
Yeah, the one across the street.
Which is not affiliated with the county.
No, that's a private organization, nonprofit.
Right.
Interesting.
Okay, all right, staff, y'all gonna work on that?
Sir, would you want that on the fifteenth, or?
If you could, if you can have it ready by then, yes, sir.
Yeah, we'll take a look, see if we can get done quick.
All right.
Sir, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lainer. Commissioner Mitchell?
Two things, Mr. Chair, and thank you. Hopefully it can be heard. I'd like to echo what Commissioner Lainer said, an animal is personal property. If the county picks up my car for any reason, I expect the county to be able to tell me exactly where it is and return it to me and not give it to somebody else or sell it to somebody else. And I feel the same way about an animal that is somebody's property. So I think we need to address that in the ordinance. I think it leaves the county wide open for a lawsuit with it. So thank you, county staff, for moving on that quickly with short time. Totally different issue, I have gotten a number of phone calls from parents in my district about the availability of lacrosse fields for local youth lacrosse competitions. With it, I like lacrosse, it's a sport that kids of both sexes can play. You don't have to be terribly tall or terribly big, it is extremely inclusive. And according to the parents, they are having difficulty utilizing county facilities. I don't know about this, but I'd like for the county, for staff to look into it and get back to me in terms of what is available and what is not. But it's a significant concern, and it's particularly come out during COVID when safe opportunities for sports have been limited. But that's all I've got, sir.
Okay, all right, County Manager, you wrote that down? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Smith?
I do have something I would like to announce, that we are having a COVID vaccine. I guess I would say giving, we're gonna have a process at Bryant Chapel Church in Co City. And we'll have, I think, a very good response. We have currently about eighty people registered for this vaccine, and it will be given on the eighth of of a March. We're still taking applications, so if there's someone out there who would like to get the vaccine, we want them to register. You can call me, and we have two other people, we have a flyer, I didn't bring the numbers right now, but we have, working, I have working with me Lauren Wilson from Co City, from Bryant Chapel Church. And I have Elder Eridanda Dobson, she is the elder for the African-American Episcopal Zion Churches for the New Bern District. And Fern Cotton, who is the social justice person for Theta Beta, for Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. And they are doing a fantastic job, and I'm so, so happy with the job that they are doing. When we finish with that area, we plan to move to another area. We're having a meeting tomorrow to kind of get all of our ducks in a row, so that we'll make sure that we are ready for the vaccination process. So I'm happy to say that at this time, we seem to be having the bus on the road and right people on the bus, and we're doing, moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner McCabe?
Yes, I, in the same boat that Mr. Peter Smith is in, we are having the COVID-nineteen vaccination shots on Wednesday at one-thirty, which is March the third, at one-thirty, at the Hall of Commendation Center. And we also have some people from the Health Department come down there to arrange the tables, so everything is ready to go for Wednesday. So if anyone of y'all would like to come and help out, you're quite welcome. And it's supposed to rain, but I'm praying doesn't rain that much. It's a lot of time in the rain, people just not gonna come, but they should come with this. Hopefully it'll be very successful. And I did, like I said, I did notify the sheriff, he can have a couple of patrols down there, make sure everything is going right, stuff like that. And he should go on very well. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner McCabe. Yes, Commissioner Smith?
Speak back. I can give my number, my number is two-five-two-six-three-three-three-seven-two-four. So if anyone would like to call me and get registered for that vaccine, they can do so. I'm also taking names for people who are taking the vaccine in New Bern. So if you want to get the vaccine, if you live in New Bern and you want to get or need the vaccine, you must be sixty-five or older at this point, but we are offering that vaccine in New Bern. This is the vaccine from the County Health Department, and we offer it in New Bern. And soon, when we finish this district, we're gonna move to Vance Bar area. So please, take the vaccine, it's safe and effective. I've taken it, and I've had good results, so I encourage everyone to do that.
All right, Vice Chair Booker?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Two things to share with the Board. First, each of you have seen in the paper, I think, this weekend about the concern about the trash along our roadways and especially down the four lane. The County Manager and myself, because I'm your representative on the Croissama Board, we have been in discussions and talking with the staff there at Croissama, also with the Sheriff's Department, our sheriff. And tomorrow, the County Manager has a meeting with a list of individuals from their adjoining counties to also discuss how we can do a better job in trying to pick up trash as a three-county effort to be led by the Croissama. We are still, as County Government, looking for an individual to take care of our roadside pickup. That job is still out there, and we're taking applications for it, and they're going through that process now. The sheriff has agreed to put inmates back on the highway now. It was stopped for a while because of the COVID situation. So there is some traction. I do want you to know that, you know, there's a lot of conversations going, do you want to add anything, I said?
Mr. Chairman, no, no, sir, I think you hit it well. I think it's not a Craven County problem when we're talking about the large trucks. We gotta work on where the transfer stations are, and if we gotta work with Carteret and Pamlico County to have an agreement. But there are things locally, we know that there's a lot of trash that comes out of the trucks, there's a lot of trash that goes out the window, too. And we gotta have people who are more cognizant not to do that, and we've still got a legal dumping, unfortunately. And there was an article this past weekend, I don't know if the Board read it in the paper, but talked a lot about what's going on in Croatan Forest and other areas, so a lot of different ways it's gotta be addressed.
You know, this Board has had a lot of discussions about this in the past. Commissioner Smith, we've discussed about what can we do on the enforcement side. And that's a big problem, and one that we don't have a lot of control over as a Board of Commissioners. But I think, you know, as County Manager and myself have talked right much over the last week or two about this problem, you know, we're gonna all have to put our heads together going forward and try to find some realistic solutions, as he stated. You know, I think we're gonna probably do a better job in the pickup and what we've got coming forward with the Croissama coming onboard, hopefully, it's got to be approved by the Board there and put it into their budget. But with them coming onboard with us and what we're doing, also our investment in Clean Sweep and what you already do, but we've got to have some help on the enforcement side. And that's where we all gonna have to come together and try to, you know, figure out how we can make that happen, so, yes, sir.
I think, and this is a problem, it's been here forever and it's not going away soon, I don't think, but two comments, number one, I've seen too many cases where the trash coming off of trucks that are hauling trash is a big part of the problem. And I think there's gotta be some way to, trying to think of the right word, some way to explain to those folks, and it's basically one hauler who hauls most of the trash in our county. They need to understand somehow, we need to get the message through that they're gonna pay a price if they don't figure out how to keep this stuff on the trucks. So that's one thing, you know, people pick up trash and put it in their garbage can, or they take it from their house, it goes in a truck, and next thing you know, it's coming back out of the truck, and we got it back on the road. That's one issue. Most of you know I've got a small property in, on the north side of Bridston, and I probably have a two-thousand-foot frontage. And once a week, I walk with a trash bag in front of my property, and it is constant. It's beer cans, it's soda cans, it's fast food packages, those are the three main things that I pick up. And it's just, as I left there today, I turned out of my driveway and I looked, and there was fresh stuff that wasn't there yesterday. So I know it's a really difficult enforcement thing, but it seems to me that, and maybe we need to have a discussion with the sheriff and say, hey, what can we do? Unmarked vehicles parked along the side of the road and just sit there for a few hours and nail some people? There's gotta be some stiff fines, and I know that part of that bill that they're gonna double the fines. Well, you can quadruple the fines if you don't catch anybody, it doesn't do any good. So I think it's a two-pronged thing, and we need to attack both.
Mr. County Manager, I think when we have our, I know we're gonna discuss some trash issues at our work session, maybe we maybe just fit a little bit this in on the fifteenth and have a little bit further discussion. I just want to let you know as a Board that Croissama is gonna be a team player in this. They're at the table, they want to do everything they can to be good stewards and try to correct some of the problems that, you know, some folks have identified, so. Second thing I just want to say, I want to thank Commissioner Smith for her leadership in helping us with the vaccine. She's been able to help us, her and Commissioner McCabe, in getting this equity allotment out across the county. And I thank you for your leadership, you spend a lot of time in it. I think we got some good news about our allotment, and I'll turn it over to the County Manager. I think he maybe want to just highlight a few things there, and then I may finish with my comments, so I think you may have another item.
Well, and I got excited up at the podium, which happens about once a year, and I left off the most important thing, which is talking about COVID vaccines. And I continue, want to start with, continue to get compliments on the county staff at the Convention Center and the job they're doing. Just today, I heard from three different individuals talking about their experience and how well it was run. So those folks need a lot of kudos, and I'm really proud of them. Second thing, Mr. Chairman, you're exactly right, we got our allocation on Friday, which would be for not this week, the next week. And we got an additional allotment for an event, we got an additional twenty-three hundred doses in Craven County. That's the most one-time shots we've got. We're still maintaining our baseline of eleven-hundred-and-seventy of the Pfizer, and then two-hundred of the Moderna, which is the equity allotment. The hospital's still getting their allotment, and Goshen, which is a FQHC located out near Riverbend, is getting an allotment. So we're really now starting to get the quantity that we should have been getting in January, we're thankful for it. I talked to Mr. Harrelson today, and some kind of late-breaking news. Every Monday, the bank of shot appointments for next week opens up, and they noticed as the day went, there were still significant amount of slots left. And they went ahead and opened it up to three A, which is any teacher, childcare worker, daycare worker, private school teacher, whatever, if you're involved with the school, they open those slots up, and they did end up filling up. But that's good news that we're moving into that population. On March the tenth, the State will allow us to go into Phase Three in totality, which is all essential workers. There's not a great definition for essential worker, so, you know, obviously, there's some guidelines from the CDC and the State will use, but that will then, with the additional- some guidelines from the CDC and the state will use, but that will then, with the additional shot coming in next week, that opening up, we're gonna see a much larger segment of population have the opportunity to get it. So I wanna make sure I said that before we left tonight.
Good news.
Um, Mr. Chair, are we putting out press releases on this?
On?
Uh, opening it up to three A, the sites, um-
It did go out today, ma'am, it did. As soon as that decision was made, it went out. It did.
Okay, good, thank you.
And, and just for information, we had, when I say we, the Health Department, uh, had already met with the school system, and there was already an allotment, um, that was supposed to begin, um, this week, three-hundred-and-fifty for the next three weeks. So this would just enhance that, um-
Yep.
And I think they, they have somewhere around eighteen-hundred employees. We don't know if all of them will take the vaccine, you know?
Right, they got eleven-hundred on the list that signed up.
Eleven-hundred, so, uh-
That was the three-fifty for three weeks, we'd get them all one shot. But by opening it up today, some will come get it beforehand, outside of that, so that three-fifty can go to, you know, your private schools, parochial schools, daycares, preschools. You got a lot of folks that aren't public school in this county that work with children, so.
We're making good headway. I mean, you know, I think we got a lot to be thankful for right here, we really do. All right, uh, Commissioners, do you have any other reports that need to come before us, 'cause we have a closed session this evening, anything? All right, um, tonight we have a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three-eighteen-point-eleven, A and three, to consult with the attorney to, and this will be attorney-client privilege. Do I have a motion that we go into closed session?
Move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed.